You can even vote if you want to come up here and vote.
Oh, really?
Well, none of you are yet to be valid.
I haven't done that yet.
You could, you could.
My lucky man.
Unless you're walking around. I am, I'll go into both.
Portland opened up the whole auditorium.
There you go.
Hello, Mr. Berry, how are you tonight?
Lovely, I'm good standing.
When you leave here.
May I leave here?
If you enjoy winter squash, there's a bed of the gray dogs out there with military stickers all over the windows. I have butternut and pork squash.
Oh.
Tons of butternut and pork squash. And it's all organic, I still.
I'll try to keep that in mind, I'm trying to think. I think it's see. Which one's the butternut, the butternut, the green with the?
Acorn is the green one.
Okay, but and it's yellow, the meat's yellow, isn't it?
Yeah, and then butternut through kind of round bottom and the thing and they're orange.
Thinking it must be acorn now. My mom used to do all sorts of stuff with that stuff. Dad loved it. Alright. Here we be. Turned on and everything. Testing. Uh oh, I should have brought one too. Testing. There it is, right there. Ooh.
That is the discussion.
It's just informational, right? Okay.
So we having a public hearing tonight on the. Or this is. In the back of my pickup truck out in. Is a ton of acorns and squash organs that I'm giving away. So make sure you grab some to take home to your, your wife.
Yep. Oh, great.
You want more of it printed out?
What?
I don't know, what else is there? It's interesting.
It was a lot of.
Geez, dude.
All of the things, all the filters, all the pickup trucks. That was enough.
Hey, Tash.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Good, you well?
I'm doing. It's school day, you know.
It would be good to have something on.
It's school days, you know. So I'm out of the house most of the time.
Not all of it, but at least what they're quoting for prices for the real estate.
They get a lot of learning.
Come on, look at it, come on. Oh, come on.
I haven't figured out how to. Print from. The iPad on my printer. It keeps asking for a password and I have no clue what it is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. and Frank.
A new mask. A new mask.
Oh.
I like it.
It's rifle paper company fabric. Design of that. Just a reminder, Keith. Three minute rule.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Well, otherwise, you know.
No, yeah.
We've got a lot to do. Get that, Tasha?
Yeah, I'll get my phone. Do the time.
Do the kind of recovery.
Okay, good.
You get the real estate one in there?
Yes.
My iPad? Apple ID, is it my email address or is it town of?
It should be a generic town.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I don't have, I don't know that Apple ID.
I don't either. Yes.
I don't know what it's asking me probably, but it's.
Mine. Right. I've been doing that, but I didn't know how long it would let me do it.
But mine's not backed up either. And it's been connected to power locked in on wifi. So it must.
It won't back up, you don't have a backup service.
Okay.
What's the last message you got?
Oh, I get it on my phone anyway, I don't use this for that, so. Let's see.
Last one I got was last Wednesday from Joe.
I didn't get one either.
I haven't gotten anything sent.
No, that was my message, right, I didn't.
That's it?
Nope.
There's more messages that have come through?
Yep. I've got one at 4:55 today. I'm assuming it went to everybody.
Today?
Went to Keith, went to Tasha, went to, plus five more.
I need to look at my iPad today.
Did you get the school board agenda?
No. From that bunker. This test come in.
I think I get that on, on my.
I don't get. I don't get the school board.
I didn't get it.
One for the school board, they send it to me on.
Do you want to forward that to me, try again?
I can do that, see if I'm smart enough to do this. Let's see. Hit that. Reply to.
Is anything attached?
Forward. Yeah, it is attached.
Then make sure you include that, because I didn't get the, I don't know what Jack's contract says, because I never got it.
It's not the contract, let's see.
I know, but the last forward.
Right, right.
Apparently, I don't know how to do it correctly. Because I think I, I got something where you hadn't received it, so I tried sending it again. I tried sending the same thing to you.
Okay, no, I haven't gotten anything.
I'm gonna send it like this and you tell me if you.
I don't remember exactly when I sent that, I think it was later than that.
I just have a message at the meeting pad, Monday night meeting packet is ready. I haven't received any of the email.
Nothing. Really? Yep. Let's see. Let me try it again. Forward. You've only got one town email address, right?
Like, I just, I just got it.
Okay. Mr. Ray?
Hi, guys.
Good evening.
Get the attachment?
Yep.
On?
On his.
Seventeen.
I see him upstairs working. One day. I hope I have a half.
Yeah. I have no idea. Comes to my trains. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Hmm.
Tash, did you get the other email? Did Joe send you?
I just got one from Jimmy.
What's that, is there another one?
I know, my camera's off, I think.
I'm just wondering if my ID will be updated. How many emails have you gotten, Joe, since last Wednesday?
Two, three, maybe. Keith tried to send me one, but I still didn't get his.
I didn't get that either.
I think I tried to send the whole three or four.
Other than that, the only other one I got was the one about five minutes to five tonight.
About what?
Five minutes to five. Five o'clock tonight, about five minutes to five o'clock tonight. I got one from James. Madam. It has. And that's your password, right?
Right, it's three, yeah, three letters password. And I think it always stores it from mom and then you have to read it.
Hmm.
Maybe that's why I, you know, I get the ones I'm trying to forward. I have to check that. Eight, six thirty. I'm tired of.
What religion is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
All councilors are present. We have a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Counselor Chair, make that motion to accept the minutes.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? On the table? In unanimous. Have a motion to accept the department reports.
So, move.
May I have a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? In unanimous. Okay, so. I guess the next one is. Land use changes.
If you want to just open the first. The first public hearing on changes to the land use regarding marijuana, we can do that reading and see if there are any comments about it.
Is it 5.1 you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. You need an emotion?
Nope, you can just declare it open.
All right.
And under, under. Planning Board was working through and provided us this language. At last month's meeting, we've posted the language regarding changes to the land use code for marijuana, the only thing the Planning Board is recommending at this time is to add the definition. Facility is defined as one standalone building to the definition section of the land use code. Now, are there any, we can start with the room, is there anybody in the room who wants to speak regarding that? Hearing, nobody, is there anybody online who wants to speak regarding? This public hearing?
I would, Zach, this is TJ there, if you can hear me.
Yep, we got you TJ, go ahead.
Hey, guys, TJ there, Six Lane Road. Want to thank you so much again for your continued help. As one of the two licensed dispensaries in the Time Mechanic Falls, I really wanted to. Chime in here and acknowledge that I stand behind this change, the land use ordinance, as does Bob Clark, the other land use. Excuse me, the other dispensary owner. The Planning Board has been working really hard to really get the laws dialed in so that we can operate and operate effectively and. So Bob and I are both in favor of changing the definition to include this new definition of facilities.
Thank you TJ, anybody else online want to speak to this change? Hearing or. Alright, you want to come up?
I'm a American law enforcement officer, one thing that our attorney did recommend was changing it not from just facility, but a marijuana facility. So the, our ordinance. Talks about a marijuana facility specifically stating that's marijuana facility added to the definition is something Jack suggested, so I wanted to bring that up.
Would you repeat that again? On the definition?
Instead of just facility equalling one standalone building, marijuana facility.
Okay.
Equalling one standalone facility.
Okay.
So would we want to look to, on adoption, adopted. With an amendment to change it to marijuana facilities defined as one standalone building? If you guys are considering that.
Do we have to make an amendment? Motion to make an amendment on that?
Yeah, not until we get to the end of it, we'll adopt it down below, these are just a public hearings, so if those are good for comments, questions, anyone else want to? Speak to this one before we move on to the next ones? Chair, if you want to close that public hearing, you can open the next one.
Okay, we're now taking. Comments on mechanic falls land use changes. Noise abatement.
So this was more language put together by the Planning Board. So the only change that this is adding under table two, section four, noise abatement would be to add. The language between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM and removing the be required to. So it would read excessive noise at unreasonable hours between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM must be muffled so as not to be objectionable due to intermittence, beat frequency, shrillness, or volume.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I guess. I don't know who to pose this to, have we had many problems? with noise between 11:00 to 6:00, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM?
I guess I have to refer that to the chief.
I'm not going to say that we've had a lot of problems, but we get noise complaints periodically about a lot of different things. It isn't always one thing, there's a lot of different things.
May I? Uh, what's the one that you get the most of?
Usually it's either loud music or we get, it's a combination a lot of times whenever there's fireworks even if they're permitted, we get complaints about fireworks.
Okay, thank you. After 11:00 PM?
After 11:00 PM, not so much. That's just a general noise disturbance complaint in general, fireworks and the loud music.
In the same location?
All over, all over different places.
Um, does the council have any more questions? Anybody in the room have any questions on the proposed changes to the noise abatement? Anybody online have any concerns? You can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Not hearing any, we can move on. We'll again vote on that later in the evening. Chair, if you want to close and open the next one on kennels.
Land use is closed and mechanic falls, land use for kennels is open.
This one is again proposed by the Planning Board. This would add kennels, animal kennels to the land use table, which specifies under what district kennels would be allowed. And the way it's proposed is it would, they would not be allowed in any district except for the rural district, and in the rural district, they would have to be conditionally used, which means they would still have to go in front of the Planning Board for approval. And it would also add the definition that a kennel is an establishment in which more than four dogs or four cats are sold, housed, bred, boarded, or trained for a fee. Does the council have any questions to start?
What do other towns do, you know? Well, Alan, would Alan, would you know that, Alan?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that particular question. They didn't ask me to research that. I don't know what other towns.
Yeah, I was just, just curious. No, thank you.
I think the reason for this is that some of them have been in residential areas that have been a problem.
There are, there are running complaints and concerns with a couple that are, you know, permitted and approved, so they won't be affected. They'll be grandfathered into the position anyway, but.
Good, Jeff?
That would be another one of our noise complaints we all could get, a parking lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room or online want to speak to kennels? Hearing none, Chair, if you want to.
I have one.
Oh, sorry, right.
I think that you ought to include that more than four dogs or more than four cats. Rather than now that we have a four limit, I think more needs to be appropriate on the four cats.
So they couldn't read it as?
Right.
Okay. We can look and add that in as amendment when we bring it up.
So you're just looking at, to add more to cats?
Cats, right.
Okay.
So they're equal.
Okay, I guess all of the comments on that have been added, so we'll close that. And 5.4, household waste.
So the household waste is not a land use change. This would be a standalone ordinance from council. And after the kind of conversation when we first accepted this, Alan and I went back and forth a little bit. Given Rose's input, so there is also the opportunity. So the way it reads currently, occupants and/or owners shall secure all bagged or unbagged residential solid waste and recyclable material in a suitable container which shields it from the public view and protects it from pests and other animals. Occupants and/or owners shall not permit such solid waste or recyclable materials to accumulate on or about the premise except in such suitable containers, residential solid waste is any household rubbish or trash. Now, given the concerns on trash day and, and that, a potential thought process to the original language that was presented would be occupants and/or owners shall not permit old waste or recyclable material to accumulate on or about the premises for more than a 24-hour period, except in such suit. Or throwing away, you know, box or something you can't fit in a trash can, like a TV or something, right? By that ordinance. So if there was some time period, like a 24-hour period, to know that on trash day, you know, you don't need to fit all of it in the barrel.
May I? On trash day, I don't fit anything in the barrel. I just put it out. What do we currently do for issues with household trash and, you know, is that a safety and health issue?
We have treated them as he, so health and safety issues in the past because unfortunately, some of the ones that really become an issue are ones that are well out of hand, something that would take more than 20 barrels to fill. And at that point in time, we get, you know, letters from either code officer or health officer, same person in this sense, but.
I, I just think that it's a little far reaching. And this, this is because we don't have anything on the books right now. How many, how many households do we have that is in violation of trash? And I know there have been some houses out there, I've seen them, that the trash is accumulated, but, you know, and animals will get into trash. They can open up those barrels on the covers and get into it. It's, it's a little farther reaching from nothing to this. I, I don't know if, who's going to police this?
I would. And I, I wouldn't.
Okay.
I wouldn't police it, but probably I wouldn't be policing it on a regular basis because it wouldn't be needed on a regular basis. For most households, the ones that get out of control or start getting on that edge of creating a self and health, safety and health issue are the people that this would regulate.
Do we need it this strong?
I don't know. Do you have something other to propose?
No, I'm asking you.
I, that's, I think that's not too strong. Other towns and cities do that. So I have checked that.
Okay.
I know that there, there are many other towns and cities that have a waste ordinance.
What do are you currently doing the health and safety issues with some of the problems that are out there?
Some places like, but I don't have anything to, to say. I don't have anything to say. You're, you're violating this right here.
If it's not a vehicle.
What I, what I have, I can show them with vehicles. You're violating this. I need you to change this. So that's, that's okay. I can do that. If I don't have an ordinance.
Okay, you can't do it with the health and safety issue?
You can, but it's more clear when we've, this town has, this body has said, these are the rules we all have to live by. So therefore I can show that.
And, and I understand. I just, I just think it's, it's a little, a little strong. And, you know, again, I've seen some of the places out there that have accumulated.
And those, those are the places that I would be visiting on a regular basis and saying, and we could, we could cite them and then charge them fees. Not that that would even matter sometimes, but it's a, it's a rock solid thing you can point to to say, you're not doing this and we need you to do this.
Thank you.
Alan, so what type of enforcement system would you use? Would you use like a verbal, a written, and then a citation?
I have already started that process, so I usually go and talk to them. Hey, did you know that you're in violation of an ordinance? And sometimes they say, no, we didn't know that. Oh, you are. I'd like you to work on cleaning that up, doing some changes to that. So I'll come back in. What's a reasonable time for you? Is two weeks okay for you? And if they say sure, then I come back in two weeks. And in two weeks, if they're not changed, I'll say, well, you know, you haven't done anything, so now I'm going to tighten that up a little bit. So I'm going to come back in a week. And if you don't have anything changed, then I'm going to issue a violation. That's going to cost $50.
Well, there's nothing in this language that states your, your process.
But it would be a violation and I would go follow the regular violation process. So we have a violation process in our ordinances. So that's standard for any violation of the order.
Yeah, but I think you need to clarify it. If we're going to do a waste ordinance, you need to clarify it and, and just repeat. I know it's redundant, but you need to clarify that, that this will be the process that will be implemented if we go to this.
Okay.
I, I, I think that would be so, so they would understand that there are different steps or phases that would apply. And I'm assuming you would leave them a written notice of some sort or a sheet that says the violations. So it'll leave a paper trail. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
If we're going to require that with this ordinance, does this mean that we're going to have to go back and do that with every ordinance in our town land use ordinance book?
What is the answer to that question?
It's a, our, but our violation process is for violations of our ordinance. So this would become part of our ordinance and we would use that violation process for any violation of our order.
So if, if, for instance, if it didn't make the changes Ray is, is suggested, then the, the same process would happen? Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything on that? Anybody online?
I don't see anybody online. If you are all good, we would look to close the household waste.
I have a quick question. Where, so I know we voted on these last time to bring them this far.
Yep.
I'm trying to find it again so I can read it again. Can you just tell me that, what was the word change that you, you remind me what you and Alan discussed for a change?
To the household ordinance one?
Yeah.
It was putting a 24-hour period, essentially like a grace period for 24 hours within, within the existing language.
So you would still need to get the trash can, the trash, so or not? Okay.
If you, if.
Okay, so trash day, you can put your trash at the end of the road. Okay.
Yeah, you can put out the day before, type D.
Okay, okay. I, I thought that's what we had.
That's what we began speaking of, but the language that we have, so in order to, to modify that, when we do, we just have to amend it before adoption.
Okay, so it was last meeting though, that we had that verbiage, correct? Or no, did we just talk?
We just talked about it.
Oh, it's not written anywhere?
No.
Okay, I'm looking for it. I remember talking about it.
So if we're good with household waste for now, we will be taking them up under the ordinance and resolve Section 9. And we would be looking to open a public hearing on changes. Sorry, American Legion liquor license is first.
Okay. Comments on the license for the American Legion?
Any comments in the room? Any comments online? Or re-licensure that we go through every year? None, we can move on. And if you want to open the last public hearing for changes to general assistance maximum update.
Comments on general assistance update?
Start real quick. So it's a long ordinance. It's something that we pass every year. So the changes on this one, I'd like to highlight. Under Appendix A, mechanic falls is covered under the Lewis and Auburn metropolitan area. So for a person, a household of one, the maximum that they could get per month would be increased by $16. Household of two would increase $15. Household of three would increase $18. Household of four would increase 22. And household of five plus would increase $27. So these are really the only changes that we address every year. The rest of it is the management and what we do when we appoint our general assistance coordinator that services all of these.
That was just the title of that?
Correct.
So it's just an update on, on the amount that they are receiving per month?
The maximum amount that they can receive. So again, it's kind of our last, our final, the final line of kind of social services when people are having trouble with rent or other, you know, food or emergency heating oil. We're on a 24-hour response period by state statute that if someone puts in a request, we do have to respond within 24 hours and then we can work with them on the other side. And that's what Rebecca does.
Thank you.
Any questions internally, externally? Hearing none, you can close the public hearing.
Okay, closed. Are there any comments from the public? Yes.
I'm Paula Stotson from 87 Stampiper and Mechanic Falls. What I have handed to you is an email that I sent out.
Be careful, no personal name. And careful of your comments.
I will be.
Thank you.
I sent this, I sent this email a week before last month's email or a town meeting, and it wasn't addressed, obviously because the timeframe, but I also noticed it wasn't addressed this time around. I'm very concerned about the town attorney issue, especially on this. We need to consider as a town getting a new town attorney. He has been negligent, in my opinion, in the advice that he has given this town over the last 19 months. It started back in June of 2019 when Mr. Hackett and Ms. Fife Field met with him, and it's continued.
No personal names.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you meant that way. And it's continued on through the bad advice he's given, including the last three council meetings that he was asked to come and help give advice, especially with the marijuana moratorium that was asked for. We always, we don't get any definitive answers. We get coulda, shoulda, well, maybe you can, but if you do, this might happen. And I really feel at this point, he has not done our town a good value for our dollar and that we really need to consider since his contract is coming up for renewal, replacing him with a firm that can better serve our town, especially for the amount of money that we pay out to an attorney. And then my other issue is I would like to see two amendments made to the charter. And then my other issue is I would like to see two amendments made to the charter. The First Amendment, I would like to see, there needs to be a provision that keeps someone who is a resident and has tried to get a job in our town and has been passed over for another from being able to sit on the council for at least three to five years. And the reason this is, is because that individual, once they're put on council, is put in a position of authority over whoever that person is. And they might utilize that position in a negative manner, which is not good. The other charter change that I would like to see also is that if, and we have this happen with the last 18 months, is that.
Three minutes.
We need to consider an amendment that would keep a employee that may have been passed over for one position and appointed in another from being in a position at any point of over, being over the person that they passed up for the same issue for the.
All right.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to do an amendment to the charter? Doesn't that?
No, no, no. That's a long process. We don't do that.
Because that has to go through a public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
And it has to be voted on by the people?
By the people.
There are other things that have been brought up in the past that people wanted to change. So it may be time to consider a charter commission for modifying our charter.
Any other comments? Wow.
Nobody else.
I'd also like that letter, email that I put, you put into the public record for everybody to see it. Because there are other concerns there that I wasn't allowed to voice that are a concern.
Is there anyone online for the public comment session? Seeing none?
Yes.
James Vataboncor, 15 True Street, Mechanic Falls, Maine. I guess what I'm trying to find out, is this 2019 all over again? We have ordinances in the town. And we have council member that doesn't want to abide by ordinances in the town. We have serious violations of things that are going on in the town. And I've emailed each and every one of you with detailed information. Catchers, the violations of the ordinances. I'll go through the list of some of the violations that are going on. We have a recreational vehicle that's being rented out at $42 per night on Airbnb. No adequate septic design for the discharge of the gray water from that rental. No lodging taxes being collected or paid to the state of Maine. Service business installing vinyl lettering on vehicles in the driveway on the property. Printing and photocopying. T-shirts, cups, signs, et cetera. Reproduction of copyrighted material, meaning logos, things like that, that are copyrighted, being printed on t-shirts. Retail sales, shirts, cups, maple sugar evaporators. Light industrial manufacturing, assembly, sales, evaporators, printing, photocopying. Most of this stuff is not allowed in the rural district. This council member hasn't even bothered to try and get a permit for years. Four years this has been going on. No permit, no taxes paid to the town. There's a clause in the charter that says that a member can be removed for moral perpetuity. Moral perpetuity according to the Supreme Court, tax evasion and fraud, which is exactly what's happening at this property. You guys all have a list.
I don't remember seeing it.
I've sent it. Zach has it, Alan has it, and all the council members I sent it to.
Oh, I don't remember seeing it, although I didn't look at my, like that today.
So my question is, we have ordinances in the town. Are the council members exempt from those ordinances? Ordinances in the charter had been referred to in this room as the Bible. Yet we have a council member that decides, these rules aren't for me. So you've got two options. That council member can resign. Or I suggest this council removes that council member for moral perpetuity. Thank you.
Alan, I got a question. Are you aware of any of this?
I became aware of some of it in the last week. And it's not something that I've dealt with yet. It's on my list of things to accomplish, but I have other things that are in front of it. I did get the email today that specified more things than I was made aware of last week. So I'll be looking into those too.
Okay. We will take this up at the next meeting. All right. Anyone else from the public have any comment? All right, that's closed. Council discussion topics. Anybody have anything they want to bring up?
Okay. Council chair?
Yes.
I would just like to ask the first speaker, Paula, the complaints that she had brought forth. Is that something that our town manager, we could perhaps at least discuss in a workshop or something before next meeting or whatever? Something to get an idea so we can get kind of a general consensus amongst the councils, how we should handle stuff like this? Would that be possible, Zach?
Well, we get a few other things to do. I think if you don't mind, perhaps Zach can look this over and put something on the, on the agenda for next, next meeting.
As long as it comes back up and we don't drop it or whatever, at least so we can say we've handled it one way or another.
We can keep prog, in between, we have to.
Yep.
Okay, so the next topic is 22 Pleasant Street.
So we ran the RFPs for listing 22 Pleasant Street. We had four responses. And their full presentations are in your packets. To summarize, the Dunham Group with a proposed list price. 550,000 with a 6% commission. Bullos, 325 with a 6%. Andrew Weiss, 3999 with a 5%. And Malone for 525 with a 6%. So our last agreement lapsed on September 11th. So currently, right now, it is not listed for sale.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Go ahead.
In looking over the the four commercial real estate people. I also noticed that the buildings on the corner, the old, the one that they're doing renovations on, the old Elm.
Oh, yeah.
Penny had an antique shop or a gift shop there. That was sold by Andrew Weiss Realty. And I believe they're out of the Lewiston, are they out of the Lewiston Auburn area?
Yep, they're the most local.
And they have a 5% commission and it's what, 399, 400? I feel comfortable with that, with that proposal. I guess I'm just offering my opinion. It, the building was at, what was it first listed at?
Whoa, 600. It was 600 and then it went to 550, I believe, at the first price reduction.
And, you know, the longer we hold it, the more it's costing us. And, you know. I guess I would lean towards, with that company. You want me to, I just want to hear somebody else's opinion. Then I would make a motion.
Has anyone else have an opinion that they want to express?
I do. And that's just their proposed listing price. Well, I mean, obviously their commission's the same, but that's their proposed listing price. It's not like what they, if they get it, that's what they're gonna list it at. So we could figure in that their 5% commission to make sure that we could at least pay off the building loan. Because we would definitely want to be able to do that. It wouldn't be in our best interest to sell it for those money. But I agree with that one. I, that one's the one I would, I like the best, well.
Yo.
No conflict, I'm no comment.
I've got a, I've got a daughter-in-law that works for one of these. Are you related to the whole town pretty much?
What's the balance that we all want?
Um, we are in the 285 ballpark. And again, to your point, it's back on the market. It's about, it used to be about 12 grand a year in property taxes. So, yeah, that would help the budget as well.
Well, Ray, do you have any comment?
I'm kind of, I kind of agree with Zach on the proposal. I think, I think, you know, I think they're asking exorbitant amounts of money for what the property really is, value-wise. So I think realistically, they're, they hit the proposed price. It's where it's gonna sell.
I've worked with them in the past in, in, in commercial real estate. And they do good presentations, I think.
And if they, I mean, if you start off with a higher number, 550, nobody's even gonna look at the listing, period. They're just gonna gloss right over. So I mean, somebody who wants to list it realistically where it's gonna sell, is gonna sell it. They're gonna push it. They're gonna get a lot more traction on it.
And the complex on the corner sold, and they sold it. And that I don't think was an easy sell.
Well, I guess everyone is in agreement. So if you want to make a motion.
I make a motion that we allow the town manager to enter into a contract with Andrew Weiss Realty.
Second to motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? What is your, 41? 4 is zero. Oh, man. Been a long day. Okay, 7.3, the town manager's contract.
So Jack revised it based on the language from last month, and that is what was included. The date in the way he included it would have been for September. I've got a version if you want. In front of me as well.
This is the, this is the exact same contract that was before, correct?
Changes that Jack made.
Just the dates.
He changed a couple other things in the red line version. But essentially to qualify the right dates.
Comment?
Yeah.
It appears that I think there's a typo on A, the top of the second page, or the top of the third page. That the town manager shall, will accrue paid vacation time at the rate of 80 hours. Isn't that supposed to be per year? Is that 80 hours a year?
Correct, per year.
Another comment? That's, it's a comment. On the D part, I don't think the council has the right, I shouldn't, let me, that. It would appear or that the council doesn't have the right to waiver the resident requirement. I think they can extend it because the charter says extend. We don't have the right to waiver. The council retains the authority to extend that time period. That's the only comment I have. It, it would, that part would be in violation of the charter. What I'm saying is extend, the charter says extend, not waiver.
Well.
That's it.
Yeah.
I just want.
The only question I have is that I would hope Jack would know that when he wrote that. Anybody else have any other comment? So, I didn't attend the motion.
Can I ask a question before I make a motion?
Cool.
How would you like that worded, Rose? Could we, could we, could we word it as the council, the council extends, extends the requirement until the duration of the town manager's contract is up? Would that suffice? I mean, if it's just a matter of a word.
Well, if, you know, extend. And, you know, okay, let me just read you what, what part of the charter.
Sure.
Down there. The town manager shall, however, be a resident of the town within nine months of his or her appointment. And the council retains the authority to extend that time period as they deem appropriate. And, you know, that could be something that should be looked at. Because I know other town managers don't always live within the community. So just a charter change, something like that.
Would it, would it be all right to word it, to extend it for the duration of his contract?
Yes.
So in that, with that language, essentially prohibit me from getting an extension of any contract two years from now? Because you're deciding that, that my residency status is now an issue?
I mean, it's not an issue now. I don't know why it would be an issue then.
I don't know why it's an issue now.
I'm just, I'm just trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Right.
And, you know, following the charter. And, you know.
I'm just trying to word it.
We can't change the charter. We can extend.
Right.
But we can't waiver.
Yeah.
May I, Chair?
Go ahead.
You could put extended indefinitely by the council.
That's effectively changing the charter.
No, because the charter says you could do it for any length of time. No, because the charter says you could do it for any length of time.
It's not appropriate.
That's why you need a charter, change the charter commission.
Within nine months.
Or as the council.
Retains the authority to extend.
Exactly. So you could say at this particular point that it's extended indefinitely. Or to the end length of the contract.
Have you got any particular wording that you would like to see on that? No comment?
I'm not getting involved in it anymore.
Okay. Can we run it? Can we run it back by the town lawyer again? And just that one word?
But they already have, the town manager already has the contract.
All right, I understand that, but I'm talking about, is it, is it presumptive on this, on the wording of D that you brought up? I mean, I mean, we're parsing words. I want to be very careful in, in doing that. I mean,
Well, somebody here has already asked the question that are we in the same position we were a year ago? I would say very close to it. Yes.
So we've resolved, we're going to hire Zach for two years. So let's include the verbiage to extend the residency requirement for the duration of his current contract. So to be, to be, when, when it comes time for you to renew another contract with us, that'll be part of the talking points.
So in order to,
Let's get this.
So in order to keep this job, I need to move my entire family two miles down the road because I don't live two miles inside the border. That's all of a sudden an issue for you.
But things could happen. You could move away, you know, and, and offer another job somewhere else too. You know, it, it, it's not a perpetual situation we're trying to deal with. We're trying to get this year contract over resolved, not even visit it again. Okay, so let's, let's move on and, and include the verbiage to take you to the end of this contract. And there again, you negotiate at the end of the contract.
But I don't need to negotiate seeing how I'm sitting in the middle of a four-year contract. I really don't need to negotiate again.
But you're only on the hook for two years. You, you've got a contract for two years at this point. Nothing is given beyond that.
Correct.
So let's resolve this for this period for your contract, solidify that for you. So you've got no qualms or questions.
What you're going to do.
Yes.
Paulus thought that you said in Sam Pipero, my opinion is Mr. La Boy should not be allowed due to bias as having put into the same position and being overseen.
Wait, wait a minute. I asked you to keep your comment impersonal.
Mr. Chair, when there are individuals on this council who are doing things inappropriate, they need to be addressed.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, but be very careful what, how you do that. No personal, no names and careful about the language.
Seems to be an issue.
No, no, well, wait a minute. You talk to me.
Okay. There seems to be an issue about my application for the town manager that has gone totally askew. Okay, Zach got the job. I did not. There's no resentment on my part because I earned far more money than that poor gentleman over there. Okay, so there again, there is no issue for me to want to take his job.
Okay.
I wouldn't have a problem with Ray's extension. I don't know, I'm not saying whether I support it or not, but what Ray is offering is to extend the residency period for, for two years. Is that correct, Ray?
Absolutely. We're dealing with one contract, not infinitesimal contracts.
Well, this horse is pretty near death. We either got to have a motion or we're going to re, pick it up next month. We need a motion.
Okay, and if we don't have a motion, he still does, you know, the town manager still has the contract, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct then?
Yeah, I mean, if there's no new contract approved, I'm still in the original.
Okay. So we're all done discussing this? Until two years from now? Anybody have a comment? Okay. Done.
We've got, we've got to sign something tonight, right? We've got to sign the new contract, right?
No.
Not necessarily. He's got a contract.
The original contract.
Right.
Which we've deemed illegal.
Oh, well, so the, nobody wants to, wants this contract or hey, let's leave it right there.
I make a motion to table 7.3 town manager's contract.
Second?
Table for a month?
Well, we would at least until we can include this clause, correct, for the two-year contract?
Ah, I thought we were working on the old contract.
He has a contract now.
I know that.
So she says, we don't, she's, leave it the way it is.
I don't, I don't know. What did I remember to say?
No. No, we did this last month. We went over this last month. We went over the month before that and we decided that was an illegal, illegal contract. We've got a new contract presented to us tonight. And it seems like we can't make a decision on it. We still need a new contract.
I would take, I'd make a motion to table it till at least next month so we can at least add this verbiage in. So I table it till next month.
What's that going to do?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
You're good.
Sandra Ball in 24 Clopen Street. Have all the other town managers lived in mechanic halls that we have now?
No.
Well, what is the big issue all of a sudden now?
Well, because of the charter. In past, you, how, what'd you say?
You didn't follow the charter then if not everybody lived.
Well, we did, we weren't involved 10 years ago, but I don't think there's a town manager that's read the town charter for at least three town managers.
I agree with that.
So what they did before is in the past. So.
Chairman, if I may, this is another example why we need to consider another town attorney.
Well, there's no second, yes.
What did we vote on last month?
To give him a, a contract that would start at the end of June of 2020 and go to 2022.
So we voted on it last month. Why do we need to vote on it again?
The town attorney said you needed to have the language in front of you and have you vote on it again. So now the language is in front of you and you could vote on it again.
I make a motion to accept the contract as written.
Do I have a second?
I guess I withdraw my motion to, to table the town, town manager's contract.
Do we have a second on Joe's motion to sign the contract? I'll second it. And we have plenty of discussion, so who's in, let's vote. Who's in favor? Oh, don't pass. Well, that is a big help.
Well, that's dead. Can we move on to new business?
Yep. Appointment of treasurer.
Deja vu, but we've appointed new treasurer. So we will need to go through the formal process for the three, to the three bank accounts for the banks that require meeting minutes for us to do that. So.
May I have a second?
If we can do them individually by bank, just so the banks believe us. The first one would be request town council approve adding Lisa Prevost to all bank accounts for the town located at Andersgagen Bank.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Yep. One would be to remove Lisa Prevost and to add Lisa Prevost and remove Michelle Emery from all banks at Derago Credit Union.
Any discussion? All in favor?
One would be to add Lisa Prevost and remove Michelle Emery from the bank accounts at Northeast Bank.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm staying.
You didn't vote on any of those?
No, Michelle's my.
Oh, heaven, yes. I get a look over there every time I vote.
Next, so this is only informational. We wanted to have a conversation to really gauge which direction we may be looking to go. And so on your desk when you came in was a packet regarding a skid steer. And we got reps from the fire department here to talk about us. What we do have is the, the, sorry, side by side, I'm on a different RFP for the side by side. So we've been running a Gen one side by side that broke earlier this year at a call. We've been struggling to get parts for it. And it's essentially now a five wheeler instead of a six wheeler because we can't replace one of the axles that broke. And we're kind of looking for an idea of what direction to go in for the utility of it. So currently, the town doesn't own the side by side. The association does, stand alone nonprofit organization.
What organization?
The Firemen's Association, Firefighters Association. Do you guys want to kind of give a little overview of kind of where we are, how useful it is? Rock, paper, scissors?
My name's John Damon. I'm the deputy chief. I'm with chief stewardman here. This year we've been actually without the side by side for our season for wildland fires. We had a call out of town where one of the axle broke in our Ranger 1,000 six-wheel drive, first generation machine. We took it in to get it fixed. They had a hard time finding any parts. They tried to get some parts that they thought would work. Those parts weren't able to work. We actually took it to another dealership, had them take a look at it and they said you could go another route for buying used parts, but they don't recommend it at all because you're buying total vehicles at that point usually. And it would be kind of a Band-Aid that would probably break again. So this machine that we have, the association put money in from other donations out of the town and it's used for wildland firefighting to get our equipment and our personnel in and out of any of the fires that we have not accessible by road. We bought this after we had a couple larger for our town brush fires. One of them was about a mile into the woods. And it was a, that was a two-day fire. And we also have our deuce, which was at the same time out of commission for this fire season due to brake issues. So I'd like to get it replaced, but I need some guidance from the council of where you guys, what route you wanted to go. You have a couple of options in front of you. Polaris seems to be the way to go in this area. It's what all of, a lot of the trails are using. It's where the local dealerships are from. And it's what all the surrounding towns are using for the same, that machine, you know, to, for what we're looking for. One of them is a, from Polaris itself, it's with the municipal side of things. It's kind of the, everything we ever could want, but more expensive than we really need. And that's a crew max or a crew-sized XP 1,000 North Star Edition, which is heated and AC for any winter rescues or hot, you know, fires that we might have in the heat of the summer. We also have the option of a Ranger 1,000 and then the Ranger XP 1,000 without the crew. These are just MSRP pricing. This isn't municipal pricing that we would get a discount with a dealership through. But it was just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at for options and kind of get some guidance from you. The other part on the back was just to put apples to apples-ish would be what this, the pump and skid unit in the back would go for if we didn't go through Polaris. Polaris one of 11,000 and we can get it for seven, seven and a half. Any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm just kind of curious as to, you know, I guess not being familiar with, you know, being able to get into isolated areas with, with a truck or anything so that it's usable all year round, correct?
So this option would be because what, one of them, it's a $5,600 add-on. You actually buy snowmobile tracks that replace the tires. So.
So with the track thing.
So it'd be a track system. So come winter time, we'd switch on the tracks. We'd be able to use it for any snowmobile accident, snowmobile fires. Lost people in the woods, things like that.
And you, you have one currently, correct?
The association has a six-wheel drive unit. We don't have tracks for it because you can't put tracks on that older machine. But yes, we have a side by side.
How long have you had that?
Three years, four years ago. We raised the money, just how we funded it, was through who drives and who and and he donated some of their, anyone, Polly passed away, they donated some to the association because they believed in giving us something because of, I don't know, we've gone by fireman's field on Sunday or Saturday and seen how many vehicles are packed over there. Just unloading, how very active this area is and very active. And they let everyone know. So they wanted to have something so we could go off, you know. We had it on standby for people having issues. So please, we've used it quite a few times and realized the 5,000 we got, we tried to save money, go use it and see what happened to the gold. It looked good. We thought it was better, and it's free. This can't get bad. Just continue.
Yes.
I have a question. So is this something that's above and beyond what we've put in CIT?
So we don't, we haven't broken out the CIPs yet, but it's not something that we had budgeted for because we weren't expecting the breakdown. And that, and that's part of the conversation for the vehicle CIP for fire. We're at about like 270, I believe, but we also know that we're coming up on one of the engines within three to five years.
So you would borrow from that CIT money?
So we're not, well, and that's kind of the conversation on, because we know that we may be behind when it comes to engine prices as well because of where the CIPs are. So we're not, well, and that's kind of the conversation on, because we know that we may be behind when it comes to engine prices as well because of where the CIPs are. So that's why we really wanted to have a bigger conversation on, you know, what, what direction the council thinks we should go in, whether or not we should do that and use that to maintain, you know, the, the services that we've been doing. And then, you know, we would have to consider that during budget season because we're going to be playing catch up on CIPs for the next replacement of an engine.
But this wasn't, this, this wasn't bought from, by the department, but this one would be. So it would be the department.
But town's always done. Like we got a bull down there, association raised money. We had a river rescue. Murphy resident kind of left home. So we bought a loan to vote. Association raised money. So we at least go out and help someone, you know.
Right.
And town has always registered and maintained it after that, you know.
So who is the association? Like who does that consist of?
It's just members of the fire department. Fire and rescue is not a requirement via member.
Yeah.
It's just kind of like, oh, then you join the fire major association. Outside, you can always join, but no one's ever, anyone's got enough to do with their home.
Yes. I understand you guys have got a real busy entourage down there at Fireman's Field. Every weekend it's packed. Now, from the fire department, do you have any other vehicles that can access any of those trails? Probably not.
No, no, I wouldn't take the pick up.
Because. So you have, so currently you have to wait for a game warden to come in to extract somebody who was injured.
Oh, we gotta make a phone calls to people we know.
Yeah, but, but the point being is that you guys are providing personal property or town operation. Alright, so that, that kind of is a liability issue, okay, for both parties involved. So have you guys investigated other brands outside of Polaris? Because they're kind of on the edge of, you know, going out of business, to be honest with you. So, so you guys got to be careful of, you know, of dealing with this brand. So explore some other options. What I'm trying to tell you is that, you know, there are other side by sides and you might want to think of a quad. A quad with a, with a potential for equipment on the back. Alright, so.
What do you mean, I guess, what do you mean by?
Four person, instead of a side by side two person. Yeah, you got, you got, you got jump seats in the back for more equipment, you know, if you need your Indian tanks or something like that, that you can put stuff in or generator.
One of those is a quad, the crew version.
A crew version, yeah, yeah, yeah. So just trying to get you to think a little bit more utilitarian. If you're gonna try to approach for something like this, and it's basically the same price. You know, you guys can supply equipment, but it's got to be that, it's got to be town property. Okay, versus, versus private property. So we don't get into a liability issue.
That's why we have a pickup truck now. And we all use our own trucks to carry all the backfire. And then we found out that they were not, go, go window out, phone goes in it. And we started having to call, they wouldn't repair it, they told us. Long story short, they wouldn't repair it, so that's why we have to take out because they did not want to have us on Public Works and why they throw a dime to use a town truck.
Yeah. And, and, and along with that, I would recommend, you know, a training program to the fire department to use, to use that equipment.
Okay.
Well, so if you look at other options, also, what do you think the discount from municipality would be?
Actually, if you look at, just an example of it would be that Crew Max price.
If, if, if you buy it separately from Polaris?
Yeah, yeah. So that was a 26, 699 MSRP. And they gave a discount price of 24, 7, 10.
Oh, okay. So this discount price is the
That's.
The price that it would end up being.
That's through Polaris directly. The dealerships wouldn't do that with me unless I did a formal quote on letter.
Okay, I misunderstood, okay.
So is there any trade in value?
No. The town doesn't own it at this point.
So this would be a town owned vehicle and so it'd be all
full price.
And well, we, we put it out for bid. We have to put it out for bid.
There's no trade. No, because the town.
So you know, on a budget wise, I was thinking, we budgeted 9,000 for a trailer this year. Buy a 9,000 dollar trailer, you got nothing to put in it. And right now what we're using is, give us an old pub works trail. We fixed up the tires automatically. And which would still serve us till we get down the road, get some, have a better trailer. Yeah, we need to offset it, you know, on the, on the whole of the vehicle.
Rural towns are making these purchases because recreational vehicles are becoming more predominant in rural towns.
We do have a rescue sled trailer, so you know, in winter, we have nothing to throw. We never had a snowmobile club. Which would work behind this track. We actually not have to fall around and get from the So that has come back quite a while.
So I guess we've given you some homework then.
Is there comments online? I'm seeing Mr. Ford.
I'm, I'm, when Ray brought up the liability issue. I believe that the snow, main state snowmobile, there's a liability covering the landowners and I think with the ATVs too. So they got this machine and they put their tracks on it, that would go under covering the liability through that. I know there's one from the state for snowmobiles that covers all the landowners for, for letting us use their private land. You can look into that. I know that, I know that law is out there.
Definitely. Thank you for that direction.
Is there any action necessary?
Only if you would like us to work up the actual replacement quote. Put out an RFP for it and see what that looks like. So we can kind of see what it looks like. I think the biggest utility of it and from having run it.
You want the motion?
That would help if you want to direct me to put out an RFP.
Yeah, I'll move motion there.
I second it.
Any other discussion?
Could we do the one with the, the single, the double feet? Well, side by side.
Four person.
Side by side and a four person.
Okay. Yeah, so already seconded, all in favor? Now we expect you to come in with a price half this.
We've had good luck lately, so hopefully that can.
I do have one more question though. Do you think there is any grants out there for something like this?
We applied Polaris, the only one now that I know actually has one and it's pretty competitive. And we, we didn't put it in just before it got done. And I got the nice letter saying we did not qualify. And I just ran, actually ran search. The Polaris grant, there is one at the ATV club, ATV club can get, but it's only for trail maintenance. But it's for trails itself, not the fire service. What Polaris does is that mini spoke package that you guys saw. I'll be very frank that we can cheap on both, I agree that we could build one cheaper than that. You know, $6,500 for a light package for a side by side.
Right. So maybe that can be part of the, what you put together though, that you build it, basically build it out yourself?
Yeah, I think a lot of the, or some of the accessories that they would put on it is useful, but you know, $6,500
First thing that breaks off.
First we need tire on period. But you know, those are the things that I try to shave off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
The next one is recreation.
So for, where are we? 8.4. I got a couple of emails from the chair of the rec committee to inform us that we have two new openings. Mr. Pinkham and Mr. Cook have resigned their positions. So we will have openings on that committee if we know people that are interested. And if I can jump to 8.5.
Yes.
We would be looking to do something a little different this year because of the changes and the potentially increase in turnout and the increase in requirements that we have to kind of put through for sanitation and labor. What we're looking to do is have the council approve our poll hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on November 3rd. As well as let us close the office, the clerk's office, so that we can use those staff downstairs to help us man the booths and run the day.
So no one will be able to get the car register, but if they had a question, they could ask you down in.
Right. And when it's, the executive orders that we're operating under now allow for us to use town staff on hand as well.
Intend the motion to.
I make a motion to close the office on November 3rd for elections.
And set the hours.
And set the hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Any discussion? All in favor? Was it unanimous?
Next up is the results from our public works. Am I on the right number? Public Works bid. So we had three responses to the pickup truck bids. Met with two of the people who showed up to the opening. PW went over the options. Their preference would be for option three. The Chevy 2021 one ton double cab with a plow rig. And they're pretty pleased. I was pretty surprised by some of the trade in values we got on it. The only downside for all of the options is going to be deliverability. They're taking orders for them, so it would be eight to 12 weeks. Upside is we can still run our own truck. We can get some more of this coming winter on the old truck before we traded in, so kind of a benefit.
Are the warranties about the same, all three of them?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions? Do they, do they have any preference specifically?
They've, they've voiced a preference for the Chevy. There's a little, I think Dodge and Chevy conflict going on, but it sounds like Chevy won.
So the Chevy is with Emerson.
Yep.
The Dodge is with Bessie.
Yes.
I'm trying to open, okay, Auburn Motor Sales has the.
Has a board.
What did they get for, for an extra? $4,000. Good, you know, Bessie's came in with 34.9 and they're 38.
So what they did when they put it together is Emerson didn't break out the plow.
Okay.
So they've added the plow into the lump price.
Okay.
The other two actually broke the plows out for about the same price.
Okay, so that Emerson becomes the lower bidder. When you add the plow to it.
Correct, but they also offered us less on the trade in. They only gave us 19,000 on a trade in. So they're, they're not the lowest bidder, but they're the second lowest bidder by about $120.
Chevy's by far the better so that you're not going to end up with a rust bucket after five or six years.
I didn't want to say it out loud.
You know, buy a lot of trucks and see a lot of trucks.
So we're talking about $120 and they prefer the Chevy?
Yep.
We'll intend a motion.
Make a motion to bid on the, choose the Chevy with Emerson Chevy.
I'll second it. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, it's unanimous again.
Thank you. Next one's real quick. I wanted to follow up on the skid steer bid. We went back to do the minutes and realized we hadn't voted for the approval. We voted to suspend the rules and add it to the agenda. We haven't completed the transaction yet, but what I'd like to do is at least get that in the minutes that we approved the CAT skid steer and have you vote on that.
Is that from a couple of months ago?
It was from last month.
But then we never did. And we never did it, okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the skid steer bid for Public Works, the cat.
We moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Next is what we would like to do as well is add some extra clerks on hand for this election. So since last month, we've gotten another $5,000 grant for technical communities. It's really money spent specifically for elections regarding COVID staffing, training, sanitation. We have extra money for that. And we're going to use it to offset some of it, but we would like to add extra clerks, election clerks to be appointed by the council as well as appoint Nancy Peterson's warden for this election.
Make a motion to, did you have a question?
Well, I'll, after the motion.
Uh, may I have a second?
So.
Michelle Emery. From the COVID, Jackson Preston. We did this late approval, I can get a role for a bunch of election clerks.
Okay.
These are just added additional clerks that have, that like volunteer for the November elections. And then apparently in our charter.
So this is, this kind of works in that they can have different shifts and get some time off and be able to fill the whole thing.
And that's what we haven't, we haven't done well in the past, but traditionally the clerks work 13 hour shifts for the election, start to finish. And this will allow us to break it up. And we are talking, we'll bring them in early to do a training based on the new layout, COVID precautions. And then we'll have extra people that'll be assigned just sanitization during the day, during the event.
Are these hired personnel or volunteers?
They're per diem, so we do pay them.
Do we lay them off afterwards?
They're, they're put in, into our budget as per diem employees, so we call them in as we need them. Same thing we do with our firefighters.
So they're on call.
But did you say you get some of the grant money to pay this?
Yes, we did get another 5,000. We're waiting on that check and then we'll just, we get a report out on what we did with it after.
We have a motion?
I did.
She did.
Okay, are we, are we voting just on the four names?
And making Nancy the warden, we have to do it separate.
You can do it in one motion. I wrote it up on one sheet.
All in favor?
Thank you. Oh, where are we? We are back to ordinances. Déjà vu. So we are jumping down to section nine for the approval of the ordinances. We can start with the marijuana related activities. And remember, we spoke about adding potentially amending it to say marijuana facilities are defined as one standalone building.
Okay. And then I'll entertain a motion for the land use marijuana, land use changes.
And that includes adding marijuana to it?
If you choose, yes.
Did you make that a motion?
Well, I was just so that's what I need to say when I say it. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the land use marijuana, the changes to the land use with marijuana concerning the facilities change and making it a marijuana facility.
Then adding an amendment?
Do we need it?
You can propose the change and then we can approve it as amended, yes.
So I need so I take it back. I make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the land use ordinance, the changes that we've made.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this where we add the amendment or do we do after?
You can add the amendment.
Okay, so I'd like to add the amendment to put marijuana in front of the board facility as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there any questions? We're voting on the amendment first. All in favor? And now we're voting on the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
We will update the language on that and have that available for signature tomorrow morning. Next one, we're going to the noise ordinance. As presented, it would change to read excessive noise at unreasonable hours between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Must be muffled so as not to be objectional due to intermittent beat frequency, shrillness, or volume.
Make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the land use regarding noise.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
9.3. This is the proposed changes regarding animal kennels. And we had offered up language to add to it. Do we want to entertain that amendment as well?
Yes. I'll make the amendment that we add more than four. If we have more than four dogs, this would be more than four cats.
Correct. Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor? Now, any discussion on the motion?
Make a motion to accept the amended motion of definition of cat.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Lastly, not lastly, but close to lastly, household waste. And we were offering a 24-hour language thing, but you guys can work it the way that makes sense to you. So what we had discussed was adding a 24-hour language to it, but if you're not comfortable with that either, we can go in any direction.
Let's let's get the motion and then we can discuss it. Make all the changes we need. So I entertain a motion to approve the household waste ordinance.
Second to motion.
I don't think the motion was made yet.
Oh, I thought you said you. I thought.
No, no, I said I would accept the motion.
Oh, you would accept a motion, okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance for household waste.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now we, anyone have discussion?
Yeah, how do we get on, put in trash day?
Is that the 24-hour language we talked about?
Yeah, or household trash.
When people are laying it out.
Yeah.
So the way I initially thought of working it in would be the second sentence. Occupants and owners shall not shall not permit such solid waste or recycled materials to accumulate on or about their premise except in suitable containers and then add in for more than a 24-hour period.
Before pickup?
Put it out on the street 24 hours.
Right, but right, but I think you have to be really clear that you're putting it out there for someone to pick up.
Correct.
I mean, you just got to be real, real clear, so we're not going to go back here. Right?
What about spring cleaning?
Same thing. Do we have a do we have a spring cleanup?
We don't have.
We don't have a spring cleanup. I mean, unless I give it still have to be 24 hours. If you're doing spring cleanup and your trash guy comes on Tuesday, then.
I got only one day to put it out.
No, you have technically kind of have to, because you could put it out the night before, then you run into the next day. Right?
Only.
Isn't this for household?
Okay.
Household waste.
So.
Yes, okay, yeah.
So.
I get my bed out there and I get my couch. I'm getting new furniture.
So just as an example, there was one that I drive by on the way home that was out for about four days. There was couches and mattresses out there, and in the windstorm the other day, their mattress had blown into the road. But it was a spring cleanup thing. I mean, they were waiting for pickup from their private company, which again, it's.
Is that going to be to the discretion of the enforcer?
Yeah. Reason. I try to use reason with anything that I do.
But Alan, you aren't going to be here forever. The ordinance will be unless changed.
Well, we're not going to be here forever either.
No, well, let's not make it. Let's not make it hard. Like some of the prior people have made it hard for us.
Could I could I ask?
You want me to ask a question? Yeah.
I want to ask. Jeff, do you see much waste out there?
Certain places, yeah. Certain habitual offenders, but overall, we don't see a ton of it. But sometimes you hit the person that throws their trash out on Tuesday and it's not picked up on Thursday.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking like I.
How early do you put yours out? On Monday and you pick it up on Saturday?
No, 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 we get picked up, gets picked up on Wednesday about 10:30 and it gets out there about nine o'clock in the morning.
So what are you worrying about?
Um, just, you know, I'm just trying to take in other citizens in town, say like, I guess, older folks, but I'm there. People who are going to go away for the day. My my basic concern is collecting trash, people who collect trash. I don't have a problem with people who don't take care of their trash and let it accumulate. I think there was a NOS Main Street apartment situation that I totally understand. I just have problems with.
I should think that if you have 24 hours, you can set it out. If you're going to go away on trash day, you can set it out the night before, so that should be able to.
Yeah, I think we make these ordinances for the habitual offenders, right? So that you have something to back up.
Yeah, so he's got to be.
So I don't think if your neighbor calls because she's seen your chair out there at the end of your street for two days, that Alan's going to come to your house and say, you're breaking the ordinance. I mean, he can, but if you're not there because you went away, then you can tell him or you can give him a call first. I see I see your point, but I also see the need for an ordinance because you have the habitual offenders and having something, you just you have to have something.
I understand that, you know. A lot of people put stuff out next to the road free.
Forever. Forever.
Forever.
Hold up. Yes.
Why do people not use on recycling center? I don't understand that. I go there every week. Why aren't people using now? Why is it having that trash picked up? I don't understand. Sorry, but that's just.
Yep.
All I do.
Yes.
Isn't this about household garbage? I'm not talking about a chair or a couch for pickup.
It's specifically for household trash.
Okay. Look, I would appreciate it if you talked to the council. Let him talk to us, please. Any other questions?
What's household trash? That's it.
He's going to determine that.
Okay.
Okay, so have we discussed this? Do we have any amendments to this?
We do have an amendment. Zach was working on an amendment.
For at the end of the second sentence, add a for a 24-hour period, for a couple-day period. That's the part that's up to it, but I think that would be an easy place to add a timeframe. And I completely understand the concern. I mean, there's the unintended consequences, or you know, if you read it, you could read into, you know, over enforcement, which we always want to make sure their language doesn't provide for that either. So it's.
So does somebody going to make a comment on how long they want this?
Okay, 24 to 36 hours.
All right.
Before pickup.
Before.
Before pickup, because it's.
You know, all things, a lot of things can happen, and I know the code enforcement officer is gearing towards.
We're not going to be able to cover everyone.
All right, 24 to 36 hours.
All right, so that is the amendment to the motion.
Correct.
So is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Pass the motion to approve it.
Rose made an amendment.
Seconded it, and then Rose made an amendment for 24 to 36 hours, but she needed a second.
Okay, I'll second her.
All right, now I think we're voting on the motion now.
The amendment passed. Now we're looking on the whole motion.
Motion.
The amended motion. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry to put everybody through this. I just it's the first one that we have out there for household waste ordinance.
And if this.
Could we ask Alan to keep track of that for us? See how many, you know, to see how many problems we have with that? I would appreciate. Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Alan, don't you, didn't I see a report where I don't know if you got a hard copy, but on on the iPod, they he made a report of everything, so.
Yeah, but this is a new ordinance.
Well, I'm sure if he has problems with people that they will be in in there in that report.
Okay.
Now.
9.5.
American Legion.
So this is we've had, we've held a public hearing for the reapproval of the club application for American Legion. So we would just be looking for a motion to approve their liquor license.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the American Legion liquor license. Second. Okay, then move the seconded to approve the license. Now, is there any discussion?
Just have a question for Jeff. Have there been very many complaints regarding the license?
All in favor?
The lines down at the bottom. Next up is the General Assistance Ordinance ordinance passed to approve with the updated maxims.
I thought it was all done. It was a bottom of the paper.
I try to keep it on the wrong page. I apologize.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the General Assistance Ordinance update.
Okay, now if that motion will cover what you are asking for.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Lastly, 9.7, we have an abatement request. Julie, can you remind me? This is another one with the Advent campground. So there's a request to abate $172.96. I believe this happened after somebody passed away and reverted back to the campground. So we assess taxes on it, even though the campground took ownership of it after the person in that.
So it's $172 that they're asking for?
Yes.
And they're a nonprofit group, correct?
Yes.
So you just need a motion to accept the abatement. I make a motion to accept the.
This happens, I think it's a little more confusing within their sense because the property itself, the real estate, is owned by them, but the buildings become a taxable property when they're owned by an individual. But then when they revert back and forth from whether the campground owns the building as well, or it's it's purchased.
It's such a small amount, too.
It is.
I mean, a big for them, small for us.
Motion and seconded.
If I get a motion for the abatement.
I did. Yeah, I made the motion and he seconded it. We just need to vote on it.
Okay. I must have been signing papers.
Yes, you are.
Any discussion? All in favor? Wow.
That's it for me?
Is that all? I'll entertain a motion to close.
Make a close adjourned.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you all. And thank you to everybody on the line. Good night.